This time we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Roll call, this action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member entering. Present, Mr. Murray.
Present.
Mr. Selby.
Present.
Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Present.
Mr. Kazook.
Present.
All board members present.
Next item is the adoption of the agenda.
There are no corrections or amendments, I don't have anything to change or add or anything, Mr. Kazook, I recommend the agenda be approved as presented.
Is there a motion?
I make the motion we adopt the agenda.
Second. Vote?
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is public comments, does anybody want to make a comment or aim to speak? If not, we'll move along. Next item is consent agenda.
We have the previous meeting minutes, paying the bills, and the school activity fund reports that were not included at the other June 17th board meeting, but there are no changes or amendments, I recommend approval of the consent agenda items.
Is there a second?
Who's second?
Brenda.
Okay.
Vote?
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Next item is preliminary ANC middle school canopy design.
In that manila folder that's sitting there, let me just, let me talk about this one first, the kind of layout of the campus. In that highlighted area, notes where the canopy would go, if you see that little shaded area where it says existing middle school, and there's a little arrow, and then the little hatched area that comes out, and then right out here, it makes a little diagonal turn, there's an arrow going through there, and as Mr. Murray and Mr. Grider and others have referenced, a lot of water comes through that area, so that can have a raised platform that would connect to the sidewalks, that would still allow the water to go underneath it, but the kids wouldn't be wading through the water on that sand, connect the sidewalks, and then it would come right back up underneath the canopy, right here in the corner, and connect over. This layout is not set in stone per se, that can be flexible, the main thing that they were wanting to see is, on the next page, is just the structure, it's a simple canopy with support poles, I showed it to Larry McGowan as well, something basic that we were looking for, that could, as we mentioned, that, you know, that could be taken back down, and most all of it could be repurposed somewhere, but how it would lead up to, I'm sorry, Mr. Kazook. There's one thing, I'm sorry. Yeah. That leads up, right up to the steps, that little open area there is the area that would have the, or shaded there, would have the little raised platform, for lack of a better term, and they just sketched this in here, and if that's the design, you know, I don't think we want brick columns or something like that, that would cost a lot, and that would be more of a permanent structure through there, and then, as we talked before, we could just, and it's very limited anyway, it's after-school hours, and it's, wouldn't be an issue, we just wouldn't have traffic after school or anything that would go through there anymore because of the support columns through there, and we wouldn't want to make it so high to compensate for a bus anyway, because then the higher you go, the wider you gotta get, you know, because the wind and stuff like that, Mr. Murray and I were talking about that earlier today, so if it's kind of this simple, basic structure along that area, and they'll scope it out exactly, and get some measurements and things better, if, you know, if this is the overall simple design that you all are good with, that's what they'll go with, and I think it's, to me, it's what we're looking for, it's simple, it's basic, could be repurposed at a later date somewhere else, and we would lose some of it, part, you know, I'm sure.
So it ain't no fold-up thing?
No, it's not a fold-up thing, we couldn't do that anyway, but, I mean, it would connect through there, and it would get what we're wanting, keep the kids out of the rain, and out of, out of the little river that comes through there too, I look at Jackie.
There's times when it's rolling, it's really deep, and they, and part of that is, it'd be helpful, because they got wet socks, they'll, they'll sit those wet socks, and they go to the classroom, and they're good, they do what they're supposed to do and all, and it would just be, and sometimes when it's even stormy, you know, we have storms, we have to wait sometimes for the change, for them to go to lunch, for the lunch period, and if it's storming or lightning, we have to hold them a little bit, but if we've got some room, we could shelter them through there, it would be, it would be great.
So if this is just kind of the consensus of what we're kind of looking at, they'll move forward with the official design and stuff.
So traffic will not go through there?
No, no, it would be, but Mr. Grider, I think we all agree, that's not a big issue, is it?
No.
No.
Almost normally, just in the afternoon, because we're not letting anything through anyway, or like during school.
It wouldn't necessitate changing sixth grade pickup in the afternoon.
No. Well, it would.
Because we, yes, we line up right here, and come through there.
Yes, and we'd have to kind of revisit or rebase that, but that would be the only thing we could, we could come through with that.
Yeah, we could come up with another plan, because right now, they line up here, drive through, and pick up right through here.
What, seventh and eighth grade?
Well, I said sixth, but it's.
It's a code, because we revisited everything where everybody would be in a mix, and it actually is closed traffic, and we can stack, stack the vehicles up, our pickup up the evening, and we don't have it all out here, right, it's really congestion every evening, but that's working very well, but I think we could still.
It dissipates pretty quickly.
Yes.
But we would, we would come up with an alternate plan for that.
Yeah, very fast, if you're talking 20 cars maybe, and they get out, if the light was like, was fast as we needed to, sometimes the lights don't see the traffic or signal like it should do, sometimes, you know, we sit there sometimes, or something with the light, I don't know which one.
But there's two that, kind of two car width lineup right here, don't be Jackie, and then they feed through.
So we won't know a price till we make the decision?
No, he just wanted to make certain that this is the design area, just a simple metal, or, you know, pre-engineered type of stuff, and nothing more permanent, and I told him I think this is what, exactly what we were looking for, and then they'll, because they have to spec it all, you know. Yep. So is this just kind of consensus, Mr. Kazook, if that's, everybody good with that?
Gerald, are you all right with this?
No.
You okay with that design?
Yeah, it looks great.
Okay.
I talked to Mr. Murray, we talked a little bit before too, about that open area between the, to raise that up there, in that hatched area there. Okay, well, I'll get back with them, and then we'll, we'll get to prices, yep. So there's no official action, Mr. Kazook, that we need to take.
Next item is contract memorandum agreements.
Okay, we have an opportunity, the first one is the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs Bureau of Justice Assistance, BGA STOP, it's a memorandum of understanding for a letter of support, it's with the Wilderness Education Project, that's the same group we work with, that has the grant that Mr. Sloan works with, with the career support specialists, this will all be about improving school climate, multi-tiered support, behavior training, and support for all that, address negative impacts of substance abuse disorder, this is only a letter of support right now, we have not been awarded the grant, but it's the first step in that, and then we have our fiscal years '25 and '26 community education grants, something you all see every year, Salem continues to receive funding for the Read to Achieve grant, I see Ms. Rita back there, and she's, we're all so tickled on the Commonwealth of Kentucky supplemental career and technical education funds, the CTE funds, this amount with this contract is almost identical, 270, I think three, off the top of my head, thousand, that goes to support our engineering, our, now that should support our education pathway, our digital with our computer science, our ag pathways, and I just want to again give a shout-out to our legislature for appropriating this money, it has made a world of difference with our, with our clubs, the availability of programs, the robotics, the technology, and it's been, it's been fun to have some money, hasn't it, Ms. Rita?
Yes.
And to work, and the teachers have been so appreciative, and I was, I texted Ms. Ackerman the other day, and I told her that we was getting that, basically the same amount again, and she told me that she'd already had the kids to write the legislators and thanking them, but I do want to let it be publicly known how much we appreciate that support with, with this funding. I do want to note that the budget that's included in this grant that Ms. Rita worked up for us currently, our full-time CTE teachers, ag teachers by law already have 240 days, but our career and business marketing, our, I'm sorry, the engineering and the computer science.
And marketing.
Yeah, they have five, if you all approve this memorandum of agreement, I've got that note, that will put them up to 10, because five doesn't do it for them, for their weekend activities and summer activities, and 10 will help a lot more, and that money that we're getting is an allowable expense, that will come out of that budget, it's not out of the general fund or anything like that, I just want to make it really clear that if you all approve that MOU, that does provide those teachers with 10 extended days instead of five, so you'll see that asterisk on that staff note. So really, Ms. Rita, did you have anything else to say about that money, it's just, it's been good, hasn't it? It's been good.
They, those three teachers do need 10.
Yes, they do, yeah, and like I said, ag teachers by law get them already by 240, yeah, so I recommend approval of the contracts and/or memorandum of agreements that's been approved by the board attorney.
Is there a motion? Second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Selby. Vote?
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Next item is Title III Immigrant Liaison Job Description.
So you all heard us talk many times about the need for our English language learners, and that our staff that's providing instruction oftentimes get pulled to provide translation services and things like that, we received a grant of $9,730 that we can put towards this position, I'll let Ms. Tanya can reference some of the details of what we would be looking for with this new position, with this funding.
I'll put my glasses on so I can read.
I've got mine hanging up into my nose now, Ms. Tanya.
Okay, so as we just said, this would be a liaison-type position, we would be looking to hire someone who would be able to communicate with our immigrant families, kind of bridge that gap between home and school. When I met with our certified ESL teachers, we had two, of course, if you remember, their biggest issue was when we had an influx of new enrollees like we did this year, we ended the year at 226 EL students, that's almost 100 students from last year, so when we have an influx like that, which we never had before, they were constantly being pulled from regular day-to-day instruction with the students, that is so necessary, and they were having to go do enrollments, or having to go just do, just basic translation services, just to get kids, make sure they had their vaccinations up to date, and make sure they knew which bus to get on, so there was a lot in the day-to-day when you get just one student, so they just requested, could we possibly get some help with someone who could just be that liaison, just to make contact with the bus garage, help these kids make sure they get the right buses, make sure they have vaccinations, settle up with, you know, doctor's appointments, dentist appointments, and things like that, so we wrote the little grant, and we got $9,730, as Mr. Ford said, and.
And I'll give kudos to the lady at KDE that helped us with that, she was phenomenal.
Yes.
She was absolutely phenomenal.
So we didn't know if we could squeeze in the right party to get the liaison, because that's what we needed, was a physical human being to, to help us out with these types of things, and also to just be a community resource as well, to be able to find them resources in the community, you know, fair housing, places to shop, so when they come here, they really just have no communication skills, so we just need a person who is able to, to bridge those gaps with the school and throughout the community, so this would pay pretty much half, or close to half of the salary of someone, but it's so vital, I mean, we've got to have that with so many students, and the numbers are going to continue to.
They are.
It's not a one-and-done here for that, I feel like we're going to continue to have.
And when we post it, we'll, of course, preference given to someone that's bilingual, and we were fortunate, last time, we had more than one person that applied, and the rate of pay is at the instructional assistant salary schedule, so it's, it's so needed, appreciate Ms. Tanya's work on it, with it, and it will, it will benefit every aspect of what we're trying to do with our kiddos. So I recommend approval, and, well, I'll just go ahead and read the finished staff note, is, we reference this, $9,730 in the Title III immigrant funds that can be put towards the creation of an immigrant liaison position, the job description's attached, and the remaining funds to cover the salary, we need to come from general fund, as noted on the previous board meetings, the need for assistance with our English learner students and families, I recommend approval of the Title III immigrant liaison job description and position.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Say your technical, Gerald.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Thank you all for that, that's just great, Ms. Rita can get that posted today.
Next item on the agenda is bond and depository.
As I said at our last board meeting, June is a lot of, and some of July too, is a lot of things that you all see each and every year, so this bonded depository, KRS 160.570 and 72KAR3:090, require each local board of education, the designated depository of funds, to execute a bond for the faithful performance of its duties, the bond shall be approved by the board, the local board of education, the commissioner of education, First National Bank has pledged $24,410,000 on the bonded depository, a copy of the collateral listing is attached for your review, so I recommend approval of the bonded depository in the amount of $24,410,000.
I don't think we should approve.
Well, if the board didn't, Brenda said she'd just cut it.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Second, Gerald, thank you. Vote?
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is fiscal year '24 capital funds request.
From the initial one that was in your board packets, it's been updated now, I'm only going to go over these amounts, because we, we did have some other stuff that was applicable to on the capital funds request, so this is for property insurance for $140,968, bus purchases for $314,029, building repairs and maintenance at $63,789, and construction services at $14,328, so for the current '23-'24 school year, we're allowed to request the use of the capital funds, subject to the approval of the commissioner of education and KDE, so we're asking for those amounts of $533,114 for the building repairs and maintenance, purchase of buses, construction services, and property insurance. Ms. Carnes, do you have anything to add to that?
No.
Okay, so again, something that we do every year, I recommend approval of local board, of the board of education to request from the commissioner of the Kentucky Department of Education for the use of capital funds in the amount of $533,114 for fiscal year '24 building repairs and maintenance, purchase of buses, construction services, and property insurance.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Say it. Gerald, second.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is fiscal year '25 pay dates.
Everybody likes to know pay dates, it's necessary for the board to set pay dates for fiscal year '25, the list is attached, and again, this is something that we do every year, typically if it falls on a Sunday, or if Monday's a labor, or holiday, then it follows through to that next day, or if it's on a Saturday, oftentimes it follows on that Friday beforehand, so it's, the list there is attached, I recommend the approval of the fiscal year '25 pay dates as, as attached, as presented, I'm sorry.
I make that motion, everybody wants your check.
Enjoy, second. Vote?
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Next item is renewal for property, general liability, and fleet insurance.
Okay, our insurance, I referenced this earlier when we did our workers' comp, that we'd be presenting this, and it was an increase, and not unlike other school districts, our current insurance for coverage for property, general liability, and fleet expires June 30, 2024, this is a renewal for '24-'25 school year, our policy with Liberty Mutual is from McKinney &amp; Blair &amp; Grider Insurance Agency, for a total cost of, you all want to, Martha, you want to drum roll on this, or, $530,015, and on your staff note, I provided a, I'll make you pull that up on this, I can see it a little bit better, I provided a comparison, that I'm just going to go through it with you, for fiscal year '24 to the, to the next year, our auto fleet went up, $22,685, liability insurance went up, $8,118, the SLEO, which is the school leaders' errors and omission policy, is $23,950, Mr. Grider, the only part that didn't go up was law enforcement coverage, so it had no, no increase, it's at $4,363, property increased by $60,071, and our umbrella insurance just went up by $1,146, so it's a total increase from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25, $123,970. That is a, a large amount, that is not something that is unique to Russell County schools, unfortunately, the market for carriers that will even cover school districts is very, very slim, they reached out to some other ones besides Liberty.
Nobody else would fit it.
Yeah.
And there's, there are districts across the state that were dropped by their carrier, and more or less struggling, begging someone to.
They were hurt.
So I know that's a lot of money, and it's, it's bad, but really, it was not nearly as bad as I thought it was going to be, because I have friends in other districts that their property went up 300 percent, I mean, it's just, Kentucky's had tornadoes to the west, floods to the east, we've been fortunate to be in the center and not experience that, but that is elevating the costs for schools. Schools are looking riskier to insurers than we were before, hopefully in a few years, that'll, you know, you know how that goes through the cycle, and hopefully it'll calm down a bit, but there was not another company that was willing to write a new policy for us, and honestly, even if they were, I think it would have been risky for us to switch, because if we were to have a claim in that first year, they could have dropped us, this company might not have taken us back, there'd be a lot of things to consider to save a few dollars there, so, I'm just grateful that we've had a good history with claims, and it was not more than this, because from what I was hearing from my colleagues, friends in other districts, we've gotten awfully easy with our increase here, and that's a terrible thing to say, and it'd still be $123,000, but.
This is something we've talked about at superintendent meetings, this is something we've talked about at the state with the construction folks, and just a lot of things, and into this, that's not only an increase in policy, there are also some restrictions on claims, for instance, like.
Where our deductibles are going up.
Deductibles are going up, if, if one of our metal roofs took a big hail damage, but it didn't mess the integrity of it, they're probably not going to fix it, all those things like that, so it's a lot of things that really limit, well, I've also, Mr. Thomas and I have been around with the underwriter with Liberty Mutual doing building inspections, and they went relatively well, they, they just asked for some things and going through it, and they've also done playgrounds recently, and they come down with the inspectors and just go through and stuff, and we really appreciate that, they offer that service, and then they also come down and do training with staff, and, just much like our workers' comp company does training with staff, so it's an increase, but I concur with Ms. Carnes, it could have been, compared to some of my other superintendent friends, it could have been, could have been a lot worse, but you've got to have insurance, and so that's where we're at, but over half a million dollars that the district will be out for the '24-'25 school year for insurance, I recommend that the Russell County Board of Education renew our policy with Liberty Mutual from McKinney &amp; Blair &amp; Grider Insurance for property liability and fleet coverage for the '24-'25 school year.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Selby. Vote?
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
That sounded a little begrudgingly when you said yes.
Well, I know you have to, so they can do whatever they want to.
Next item is '24-'25 principals' combined budgets.
Again, something that you all see each year, here presented at each schools, from the principal, their school's combined budget for the '24-'25 school year, I recommend approval of the principals' combined budget for the upcoming school year.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Vote?
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
We do a question during meeting.
Okay, next item on the agenda is '24 Russell County Schools Policies and Procedures Updates Final Reading.
Of course, as you know, with the June 17th, we had the first reading, Mrs. Dameron gave an overview of the policies, this will be the second reading and the final approval for that, that will be, take effect July 1, Mrs. Dameron, do you have anything else to add? Nothing's been changed or amended since you all had the first reading with that, happy to entertain any questions or concerns of any of the policies that were presented last time, but I recommend approval of policies and procedure updates for the Russell County Board of Education.
Motion.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion. Second.
I'll second.
Second. Vote?
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Next item is special education policy update, final reading.
The same thing, nothing has been changed to the special education policy updates that were presented at the last board meeting, this has to do with the written, changes to the prior written notice to parents, the definition of hearing impaired and vision impaired, again, this isn't something that special education policies typically are not changed or amended, really, at the district level, it comes down from the state, and due to federal or state changes, and this is that, so I recommend approval of the special education policies as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Selby. Vote?
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is annual board action for emergency teacher and emergency substitute teacher certification.
KRS, once, again, something you all see every year, KRS 161.100 and KRS 161.102, calls for each board of education to approve one-year emergency certification for teachers of specified areas of critical shortage, in order to fill unanticipated vacant teacher positions, which may occur prior to and after the opening of this current school year that's getting ready to happen, '24-'25, and also the same thing for non-certified substitute teachers, certainly we, we hire them to broaden the substitute pool, so I want to emphasize that I can only sign off, there's a special form I have to sign off on, when we hire a teacher on an emergency basis, to where do we, I have to declare that there's no other certified, otherwise qualified or certified candidates available, it could be one of two things, nobody that's qualified has applied, or maybe sometimes you have one or two people that's applied, but they have really bad reference checks, or they've been let go of other places, and they're not, you know, appropriate to hire, and that's the only two times that we can hire emergency certified, at the end of the day, most of the time for us, we find no qualified applicants, is how it, how it's happened, with the implementation of option six, this has been rare for us the past several years, hasn't it, Mrs. Boles? We've not had to use the emergency part, I won't rule that out for this year, the way it's looking on some of the positions, but we do do it quite frequently for substitute teachers that don't have a teaching degree, but we still require about 64 hours of college credit for that, so I recommend approval of the annual board for emergency teacher and substitute teacher certification.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Vote?
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is declare surplus, school nutrition item, two turbo air sandwich salad prep refrigerators.
So, um, food service has been cleaning up some stuff and things that are just thrown in storage that are never used. Um, school nutrition program has these two items, Mr. Kazook noted, two turbo air model number MST dash 60 dash N sandwich, uh, and salad prep refrigerators no longer needed. Uh, per the board of education, you all know, I have to recommend to you all, um, that superintendent shall advise the board when certain properties are no longer needed for public school purposes, on receiving this report, the board may at such time as it deemed proper and after compliance with applicable state or federal regs authorize the disposal of school properties through closed seal bids, public auction or sale for at least the fair market value established by certified appraisal. The board reserves the right to reject any and all bids, and we've attached a policy, those two things. Um, they were, these items were good working condition, uh, at last use, but they've been sitting for a while. So I recommend that Russell County Board of Education declare the turbo air model number MST dash 60 dash N sandwich salad prep refrigerators as surplus property and authorize superintendent Ford or his designate to advertise for seal bids with the option to reject any and all bids.
To reject?
Mr. Murray, it's got turbo listed, that might interest you.
Yeah, I doubt it.
It might, you might put it on the car.
You reject it, you might not get a second bid.
Well, um, oftentimes, Ms. Carol can attest to Marla, um, nobody wants any of this junk.
We don't get it.
We don't get anything. Nobody...
Putting one question, you're on it.
Yeah, nobody wants something, something else. Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Vote.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is executive session, superintendent evaluation, valuation, KRS 61 dot 8101K preliminary discussions.
So KRS 61 dot 8101K permits board of education to go into executive session for preliminary discussion of superintendent Ford's annual evaluation. Of course, you all have some attachments, um, and the, and the standards. I recommend we go into executive session, uh, pursuant to KRS 61 dot 810 subsection 1K for preliminary, preliminary discussion of superintendent Ford's evaluation. Um, just for public note, once the, uh, board reconvenes, then in public open meeting, they will give the results of the evaluation. It's 12:34.
Need a motion?
He wasn't...
We need a motion?
I'm on the motion.
Oh, right, did it. Second.[1579.12]